Okay. So we, my, my, my schedule was really aggressive and obviously we're, you know, a couple, two, three sessions behind at this point, but I knew it was aggressive. So tomorrow I'm going to have to look at a schedule and just add some more dates for January and February and just, just to all let you know and you'll see something tomorrow about that. Okay. Some of the things I wrote down for, for, to come back to were community outreach meetings and a community outreach committee, community survey, track race on traffic stops or tracking race, the crisis team, which we found that Westchester County is working on, a use of force review board with a civilian involvement and an internal survey. So, so, so that's what I have written down so far. I don't know how my notes from session one, I did reach out to Christine to see what she had put in that little room she did. And she was having server issues and she's not going to make the meeting, but she's going to look and I'll add that to the list. But that's some of the things I have so far. All right. Trying to share my screen. There we go. Okay. I'm just moving things around so I can see y'all. Okay. So we're still in tracking and reviewing use of force and identifying misconduct. We were down to, does your department use external independent reviewers to examine use of force or misconduct? I just saw the attorney general is required to investigate and if appropriate prosecute cases in which the police officer caused the death of an unarmed civilian. It's going to be expanded in 2021 to also include the deaths of armed civilians caused by a police officer, whether the officers are on duty or not. Does your department use external independent reviewers to examine use of force or misconduct? All personal complaints and internal affairs investigations will be made available to the police commissioners, supervisors, member of the town board for review upon request after they have been closed or resolved. Does your department review officers' use of force and/or misconduct during performance reviews? Performance evaluations are used as an opportunity to discuss officers' strengths and weaknesses, and such a small department, most issues would, can and would be and are identified quickly. Let's see, does your department leverage an early intervention system to prevent problematic behavior? Pretty much the same answer, and we certainly do monitor secues.
So Chief, can I ask, can I ask something? So the misconduct reviews of police officers that is, that is done, really, I think through your office, it goes to the, it goes to the board, the board is the oversight. Is that, I understand that from there, correct? They're, they're the police commissioners essentially.
They have the opportunity, they have the opportunity to be the oversight, correct?
Right.
But again, our misconduct to date is, is been very, very small issues except for other ones, and all those people have been separated from service.
Right, understood. Again, we're not, we're not talking about what has happened, but the overall procedure. So the, the thing is that, so it says when, when the, when the board requests it. So it's not automatically they get a regular report of all these things.
It's not. I mean, you know, I don't think it's necessary to give it some complaint about an officer being rude on a traffic stop, right? I mean, the bigger issues that come up.
You bring it to their attention, does it like, yes, it's a bigger issue, let's say. It's a bigger issue. You go to them and say, I got a big issue, something like that.
Right. We currently are dealing with one right now.
Okay. Asking for like a sort of a threshold or a guideline that, that some sort of guideline, if you will, a structure in place to say when something should go and when something shouldn't.
What trigger, what triggers it?
You know, I guess at this point, it's, it's my, you know, putting it past them or bringing to their attention.
So it's based on discretion. There's nothing codified about you have to do it.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing currently codified.
Chief, I, I think I saw that in another section, but while we're talking about, um, correction of behaviors pretty much, um, it's something is triggering in my brain about the, the psych evals for the police officers. And I think in our previous conversation, you mentioned that they only receive a psych eval upon, so basically the entry on the force is contingent upon their psych eval, but no other evaluations are issued throughout their tenure on the force. So.
That's great. And we actually deal with that in section four, so we will get to that.
Okay, I thought I saw it someplace else. Okay, I'll, I'll hold off then.
All right, great.
Thanks.
So, so just to Jeremy's point. So Jeremy, is this like something to park and say, question, should there be specific guidelines for the chief to bring things to the supervisors?
I think it's fair. I think we're taking a list of all of the ideas that we have, whether they come to fruition, whether they can happen, whether they can't happen. We're putting it all together. So.
Put it as a question to follow up on.
Okay, I'll add that to the list. I realize that we had already reviewed this. I started at a too soon. So we can, that's, this standard conversation about a civilian review board. Okay, I'll just, I'll just start here. What controls are in place to ensure impartiality when reviewing potential misconduct complaints? Outline the rules and regs, several levels of review supervisor detective sergeant patrol lieutenant chief and available town board requirement request. When appropriate, our cases refer to the district attorney, another personal complaint. Again, that's another prosecutor that's outlined in our rules and regs. And basically, yes, yes, they are, once it's a criminal nature. Again, I think we talked about this, district department expect leaders and officers to uphold departments' values and cultures when off duty. And these are all the things it says in the manual dictating that they have to. Just a continuation of the section of the, of the manual. Does your department have some form of civilian oversight over misconduct investigation and police reforms? I just repeated, you know, what I had said earlier, but we all agree that it's for further review. Is there an easy accessible well publicized process for members of the public to report complaints about police misconduct? So I was thinking about, you know, adding a procedure, adding the procedure and the ability to report via the website, you know, something we may want to add to this reform.
All right. I'm curious, and we may have discussed this before, so excuse my lack of remembering. If we did, can it be done anonymously? I mean, is it possible, Chief, if you're going to add something to the website about that a complaint could come in anonymously?
Our, our rules and regs say that we will accept anonymous complaints. As a matter of fact, we just had one last week.
Oh, okay, great. But there's no way to follow up then with the person, right? If they make an anonymous complaint, you can't then go back to them and say, here's how we handled it. You'd have to like publicly kind of post something, correct?
That there's no way to follow up on it, definitely. But you know, if, you know, if maybe that community outreach, you know, worked and we did have somebody on that who could be a liaison, you know, maybe the liaison could be, you know, notify the outcome.
That's actually, that's a good idea. Okay.
Yeah, I think that actually argues for some type of external entity apart from the police department where people who are not comfortable bringing it directly to the police department, but could, would be willing to bring it to another person who without, who would need to keep it confident, you know, the pertinent information as far as the name goes confidential unless otherwise released. And that person can interface with the police department. So that's another, I think, reason to consider another, an outside group, an aside board, if you will.
You know, it's kind of a due process guy, and you're right to confront your accuser type guy. How in an anonymous situation do you actually conduct the investigation? How do you corroborate? How do you follow up? How do you notify someone to the outcome? What, can you give us some examples if you have any of steps that you've taken in the past?
You know, the, the one, the one we just had, it was a well-written email by the anonymous person who described the incident. So after that, you know, we found out what officer's working, what time, we asked him for his side of the story and, and did some other clarifying things. But yes, anonymous complaints in general are very hard to investigate because you're always seeing, you know, what, what was the allegation? And, you know, you can't follow up with additional questions. So they are very hard to prove.
I mean, I, but in a smaller way, in, in the camp, I get anonymous complaints a lot, not from parents, but from other staff about staff. I get that all the time. And I can't, I can't do anything in, in the sense, I can't act necessarily on something, but I can talk to the staffer and said, this is what's being said, just like you did. And I think it has a tremendous value to, even if I'm not gonna have a personnel action, at least the information happens. And it has value. People know, somebody's watching, like, whoa, that, I gotta be careful. And so even if we don't follow up, I think it's, your conversation was the follow up.
Well, I, I would like to add that, Chief, do you mind if I mention it? Not, not?
I didn't want, I mean, I didn't want, I don't mind at all. I just didn't want to point the finger at you.
Okay, so, um, I, I just wanted to say that I reported anonymously on behalf of someone else, and I was very, very pleased with how it was handled. Just to give credit, and the deputy Eduardo followed up with me and actually gave me a really coherent explanation, and also offered to speak to the person, but once again, remembering that it is anonymous. So I then reached back out to the person and basically said, you, you, you feel no pressure to speak to him. However, if you would like to unpack this further and get some closure, the offer is on the table. And he wasn't pushy, he wasn't insistent, it was just a, a great offer, a good resolution to what happened. And I was, I was pleased with how it was handled.
For, for those who don't know, Hermie was talking about my executive officer Lieutenant Pasmino.
You know, Hermie, maybe that's the structure, like, sort of like a civilian ombudsman, I don't know, like, somebody, somebody could go to, and then you, that person could volunteer to be the go-between and sort of a barrier, and then be a little bit more of a face and represent the thing. I mean.
I think we all in agreement that that's, you know, possibly a good way to go.
Yeah, that was one of the proposals I had made for my group from the CRE, that we should have a voluntary body like that. Thanks, Chief. I liked the way it was handled, just.
See, we don't need any civilian review boards. All right, let's move on. So the next question is, are investigations outcomes reported to the complainant? Are they reported to the public, should the department or citizen complaint review entity, if any, except anonymous complaints? So the complaint is always advised, we don't report it to the general public, and honest complaints are currently accepted as per rules and regs. Does your local legislature engage in formal oversight of the police department? Should any changes be made to the legislative oversight powers and responsibility? I repeated what I said earlier, but I think we all want to discuss further, possibly, you know, what triggers it going to the next level? Is your police department accredited by any external entity? And we certainly are, and I just, I think I've read of these things before, so I don't know if you need to hear again. Does your police department do anything to track, survey the level of trust? And I think that's something we already have discussed, and we think, you know, might be a good idea going forward. Data technology and transparency. So what police incident complaint data should be collected? What data should be available to the top public? That just was enacted the Police Statistics and Transparency Act, so going forward, I think starting this December, requires reporting of criminal offenses and arrest-related deaths. Courts must compile and publish racial and other demographic data on all low-level offenses, including misdemeanors and violations. So while it doesn't do stops, the court will be doing actual violations going forward. And police agencies are required to properly report any arrest-related deaths, and so that any reports containing that information is DCHS, we govern, and that goes into effect, it was December 12th. Stop data, again, you know, we already have that down for, for the discussion.
Can I just ask one question? I failed to check this, and I, I mentioned, it's in my notes. Do we have the definition that they're using for quote, low-level offenses? I started to look, look it up, but unfortunately I got sidetracked. How are they defining low-level offenses?
I would imagine, if they're doing traffic, traffic stops are violations. So I think they're gonna have to track everything. I don't know specifically.
So that, okay, great. Cause that, that feeds into our, our thought that the tickets and the complaints and everything should include demographic information. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. What police incident complaint data should be collected? What data should be available to the public? So what leasing activity data should be collected for your department? Should be shootings, firearm charges, use of force incidents, searches, arrests, civilian complaints? Those are questions for us from the book. It should include demographic data and how often should it be disclosed? Is that something we want to discuss?
Is that, yeah. Is that the invitation to us? Like, should we do all these things?
Yep.
So do we want to discuss this now, or do we want to say, yes, let's move these questions for further discussion, you know, to our to-do list as we move forward?
Is this, okay.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, that's a question.
Are we really going to be able to go back to all of these? That's the only concern I have. I mean, we're covering so much information that I'm just worried that we're going to be missing things that we intended to discuss in the future. If we don't at least have a de minimis conversation now to remind us, does that make sense? You know, we don't have to go into this huge in-depth conversation, but I'm just concerned that we're gonna easily go over it or miss it.
I, I think we're tracking it. We're, you know, you want to take and highlight it, you can highlight it, and we can move it right over to the list. But I, I, I'm, I'm trying to be respectful of the, perhaps of the chief's ability of at least trying to, to get through some of the information and then dedicating, you know, meetings just to the things that we need to have conversations about. And if, if we take a look at this list and he needs to have an additional five or six meetings, then we have five or six meetings to go through. But I'd just like to be able to, to see what it is that we're looking at and the level of follow-up that we're gonna need to be able to dedicate to it.
Already today, I've added the town board review for misconduct, what triggers it, and, you know, what do we want to do with, with that? So.
And frankly, this entire, you know, the first thing under five should be, yeah, should be done.
Right.
You know, just pick them up and move them over to our, you know, coming back to list. Because I, I, I am curious if, if some of this stuff plays into something further on in our discussions that we'll be able to sort of wrap around.
Because it will, a lot of it will be interconnected at some point.
Exactly.
Certainly. So.
Chief, can you just tell us what demographic data is collected now?
It's, it's collected for arrests.
Just, just for arrests, and it has race, I take it.
Yes. And I, I, I did recently find out, so the new tracks ticketing system does give the ability for officers to track race. And I don't think they ask, I think it's their, what they believe the race is.
Okay.
Chief, I know we're coming back to this, but the one thing I would like to add here, in terms of data collected by the department, I would like to see data on the, the stops and question. I'm not sure what it's called. When you pull someone over and just question them about, you know, where they're coming from, where they're going, what they're doing in town. The, I, I would like to see that added as a data collection point.
Okay, we can bring that up when we discuss it.
Yeah, thank you.
How's law enforcement agency leverage data to drive policing strategies? And, you know, we do target areas for specific reasons, you know, recent burglary, you know, car larcenies, you know, chronic traffic complaints. How can your police department demonstrate a commitment to transparencies and interactions with the public? We're trying to give our name and present our badge to anyone requesting it. We require to give our name when they answer the phone. Officers do hand out event cards, you know, with their name on it and the bottom number when they're interacting with the public. How can your police department make its policies and procedures more transparent? So our policies and procedures are in line with empty T model policies and in, and in accordance with accreditation. But again, is that something we want to do? I'd like to use to force probably have that. Some of the key policies that we have to the website for review? I thought maybe, I think that might be something for suggestion, right?
I think it's a great idea.
I'm adding that for future discussion.
I agree.
Um, I'm not sure what my question is. How can your police department demonstrate a commitment to transparency and its interactions? I, I mean, is there like any kind of chart or something that, that can be developed at some point that will show like how many people were stopped and asked questions? How many places, how many neighborhoods had an incident in them that the police handled? How many times did the police use Narcam in a, or whatever, in a way that was successful? I mean, you know, I, I think, because I've been to a couple of the ceremonies that the department has had in the past where I had no idea that officers had saved people's lives, for example, who had an overdose. And it just seems that, that the transparency should be both the good and the not so good that the department is doing. So that we are, so we're aware of when an officer does something amazing or save someone. And so we're also aware when an officer is stopped, when the same person is stopped five times, let's say, or whatever the situation is. So I, I, I think if some kind of chart could be developed around that, that would be, I think, a wonderful addition on the website. We can discuss that down the road.
I'm writing it down. How can your police department ensure adequate transparency in its use of automated system and high-risk technology? They're talking about biometric technology surveillance systems, unmet aerial systems, data mining tools, geofencing tools. We don't have any of those things now. And should your department leverage video cameras to ensure law enforcement accountability, increase transparency? So currently, currently 34% of police departments in Westchester County have body cameras. I think, I thought I'd give you the pros and cons before we have a discussion. Pros are provide evidence in criminal prosecutions, promote accountability, transparency and public trust, thereby enhancing community relations, can improve both citizen and officer conduct, help assess complaints about officer misconduct, allow police departments to monitor the work of their officers, both for training purposes and personnel review. And the cons, you know, large and ongoing financial investment needed for hardware, software, personnel training, the owner is just managing storing, copying, providing discovery of video recordings, excuse me, intrusions into the public privacy of those being recorded, especially in the home, and intrusions into the privacy rights of the officers wearing the camera. Can impact and prevent interviews with victims, witnesses and informants, and the implications in handling encounters involved with privileged information, such as medical, mental health, religious or marital comm communications. So, and also I just wanted to bring up, police body camera footage is subject to public disclosure under New York law, the New York law State of Appeals Court said last February, that was a public request of video, of video onto the Freedom of Information Act.
Does this also cover cameras that are placed on the street for various, and, you know, in various communities where there might be an uptick in, in crime? Or is this, is this specifically only addressing body cameras?
I was strictly, this is strictly addressing the body cameras.
Okay.
So, you know, when we talk about kind of what we're able to do locally versus, you know, kind of the, the broader agenda and the opportunity to advance some recommendations up to the state for things that we think that they should be working on, you know, when we had this conversation in chief, sort of in the immediate aftermath of George, George Floyd's, you know, police-involved murder earlier this year, and we looked at this issue, I believe that this, when we say large and ongoing financial investment, I, I mean, I think we should be transparent and say that this would be almost crippling. I mean, it's almost impossible for the town to, to take on this kind of an investment. If I am recalling correctly, the, the kinds of dollars we're talking about here, you know, and I do think that this is potentially an area where we could advance a recommendation to the state, that the state needs to invest. You know, the state has a multi-multi-million-dollar data center, physical data center in, with racks and racks of unused storage in it. They could be storing this data on behalf of municipalities to enable us to be able to, to do this and have it be not cost prohibitive for us. So if we could just put a pin in that as a recommendation, we could make up to the state.
I agree. I think when I did the research a few months back, it came up that it was something like, was it eight hundred, six to eight hundred per camera? But then there was like a $200 data storage and access fee. It was bringing things pretty close to a thousand dollars. But the, the ongoing $200 was an annual fee per camera?
That, that, that's great. I, I actually did a breakdown and I actually got a quote. Unfortunately, I didn't bring with me. I apologize. I'll, I'll have that for everybody for next meeting, or when we want to talk about in the future.
It, the one thing I would say for, and doesn't have to be discussion now, but it's sort of, is there agreement that all of the police should be wearing body cameras or, or in some conditions? Or are we trying to avoid body cameras because we have high-quality police? Or do we want to change policing to think that there's more safety? Or like, there's so many levels to this one question, because this is, strikes me as a level of control that we're trying to place on police and citizen interaction. So I, I don't know if, if this represents a decision or if it represents a topic.
I, I agree with you, Vince.
In what way?
You know, I, we, in my opinion, body cameras have not been something we've needed to this point, and it doesn't justify the expense to the town. That's all well and said, you know, until the time you needed them, and you didn't have them, right? So.
And what would, like, what would be the conditions that would necessitate that we need body cameras? Like that kind of thing? What, what, and?
Well, it adds more transparency.
At what expense? Not just money?
Well, plus some possible violations of privacy. But, you know, body cameras can also protect police officers when allegations. When allegations are made that they're acting improperly and body camera shows that they did not act improperly, you know, it's this case dismissed.
I think more times than not, that's the case is is my is my what I've seen or in my my research. How many people in our community would want us walking in their house at their worst possible moments with us wearing a body body camera?
Yeah, well, that's 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 about that's a valid point.
That's something, that's just another side of it.
Yeah, my, you know, taking the other side, though, thirty four percent according, that's your figure of the jurisdictions in Westchester opted for body cameras. So they they had reasons for doing so. And I think it's mainly some of the larger jurisdictions that are wearing body cameras, so.
And I.
They had reasons. And maybe part of that is, you know, to protect the police officers and to see if some of the complaints made against police officers are are valid and also probably to improve police behavior. Hopefully, that's not the case in Newcastle where the wearing of a body camera, the officers could say, oh, now I can't do this, I can't do that because it's going to be on camera. Hopefully, they would never do it in the first place, the bad behavior. But that is, you know, that is certainly a valid reason for having body cameras on police officers.
I will say, you know, Harvey, they experienced this too. I I just very quick anecdote, I have a client who was beaten up pretty bad by the police in New York City, really bad. And there's no body cam footage whatsoever, and he asked the ADA, where's the footage? To which the response was they had not turned it on yet. So you know, it doesn't, and this shouldn't be a sweeping generalization about police, it's not, it's just one particular case. There is that ability to toggle on and off, or I guess depending what unit or type of unit you have. So it's not going to protect from that, but it certainly give more opportunity for law enforcement, judges, prosecutors, defense attorneys and the public to see what if anything happened at a particular incident. I think it's a great investment, but I think it's awfully expensive for us here locally, the state.
I like what um what Ivy said, if it's something we can push back on the state, I think it would be worth it. Right now, it's a private contract to have the data stored. And as Ivy pointed out, the state has the ability to store that data. And there really should be foot in the bill for the cameras and the maintenance. So if we can put it on the parking lots, chief.
Yep, it's it's already on it.
Thank you.
Chief, and before we move on, um, could you just find out what the thirty? Who comprises that thirty four percent? I'm just curious if it's anyone that is our size versus you know, a city.
Okay, I'll reach out.
Thank you.
End of section three.
All right, good night, everybody. It's been a pleasure. We're done.
Now we get to move on to tonight's agenda.
All right, I'm just gonna close that out.
While you're looking, Harvey, I don't know if you agree in your practice, but I think really the cameras have been a game changer in many circumstances, for better or for worse. Sometimes helping us, sometimes hindering us. It's tremendous, really is an amazing asset. It's just about dollars.
Yeah, well, in Westchester, it's still not that prevalent.
Yeah, it's it's a big ticket item for us. It really is.
Okay, section four, recruiting and supporting excellent personnel. Recruiting a diverse diverse workforce, excuse me. What are demographics of your agency? Sixty nine percent white, eighteen percent black, thirteen percent Hispanic, thirteen percent female. What are the demographics of the community? This is from the two thousand census, by the way. Ninety one point five percent white, one point three seven black, two point seven eight Hispanic, zero point zero five Native American, five point five percent Asian and point zero two Pacific Islander and point five one from other races. Are the demographics in mind? No. Does your agency affect the diversity of the community it serves? No, we are much more diverse. What are the ways in which you can recruit candidates that better represent the the demographics of the communities you serve? You know, we get a lot of resumes based upon the reputation of departments, which gives us a really good pool to choose for, as you can see, you know. And then we've always chosen, you know, what we think is the best officer. What are ways in which you can reevaluate hiring, practice and testing to move barriers and hiring unrepresented communities? I don't think we have an issue there. How can you encourage youth in the community to pursue careers in law enforcement? There hasn't been a huge interest, but we have provided internship with Horace Grizzly High School and colleges students when there has been an interest. And I think this SRO interaction could possibly help with that. What actions can the agency take to foster continued development and retention of diverse officers? So once our guys get here, they they when somebody comes to Newcastle, they they don't leave and many, many stay well beyond the twenty years, just like myself.
Chief, I'm wondering if you could at some point, if you wouldn't mind, provide like what what those figures are, like how many years, you know, maybe I don't know if the if it would help us as well to have kind of like a chart of who has moved in and out of what positions and who has moved up, who's become a detective, who's become a sergeant. You know, who is, you know, who, how how the department is kind of like? Is it self perpetuating in a sense? I mean, quite frankly, I I was talking to a police officer at the White Plains Mall a couple of weeks ago, and she was saying that everyone was talking about Newcastle and how it's a great place to work and there are never any openings. Which is kind of an interesting comment to hear from a police officer.
Yeah.
You know, that there aren't many, there aren't, there are are almost never any openings. And I'm not sure if that's good or bad, you know, it 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 is what it is, but it would just be kind of interesting to see kind of a flow chart of how the of how the department is structured.
How many years people have on?
I mean, is that is that difficult information to to get?
No, I I I can, I can, I could go back, you know, ten years and do it.
Because it would, it would just be interesting to see if, for example, the the BIPOC members of your force, you know, what is their longevity versus the longevity of your Caucasian or white officers? And and what the what the movement is in terms of positions and promotions.
I'm sorry, just write down notes. You know, I thought I had it written down on one of these slides, but let me come back to it. I I I did, I thought I did break down the amount of BIPOC currently who are supervisors. But I'll get it to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
So training and continued education, you know, I I just want to say some of the things that we we have instituted, we plan on moving forward on a yearly basis, you know, yearly de-escalation training and implicit bias training, whereas coming up with procedural justice training next year, and we also do yearly use of force training. How can your police officer training program reflect the community values and build trust between police officers and the communities they serve? It's a procedural justice training, community policing philosophies and grain FDO training from day one. And again, that, you know, community outreach program, I think, I think that's, well, we previously discussed. What training policies can you adopt to ensure that police continues to receive high quality, relevant in-service training sessions? Again, so we do a yearly review by the executive staff to determine training for next year. You know, this year, like again, we planned the escalation training last year. You know, this year we're training on procedural justice training next year, so we kind of look at what, you know, best practices are out there, what we feel that, you know, we're lacking and 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 have like a round table discussion on that. That seems to have worked pretty well for us. How can leadership training improve community policing and strengthen relationships between the police department and members of the public? Every one of our supervisors go to a yearly in-service training at the police academy, which covers leadership, could be mental health issues, it changes, but they get additional eight hours additional training, then patrol officers get. How can your police department use a training program to avoid incidents involving unnecessary use of lethal or non-lethal force? For, you know, again, I think de-escalation training, use of force simulators, which, you know, which is scenario of a use of force decision making and de-escalation training, which we do, we recruit training, they get professional communications, procedural justice, crisis intervention training and role play scenarios to deal with the escalation. It's an overall theme in the academy. Where will judo is, you know, it's de-escalation from the past, a lot of our older officers had that. And then use of force of your of training, and we review our policies and procedures every year with the officers, and I actually updated use of force policy last year and incorporate de-escalation into it, you know, that they that that was a step officers had to try to take. How can your police department use its training programs to avoid potential bias incidents? And build stronger connection, I can't read that, our volume populations. Again, yearly implicit bias training and procedural justice training.
Chief, what what do you mean by procedural justice?
So there's it's like the four pillars of procedural justice, I I have it earlier, it's um, it's a how do I explain it? It it's, let me go back to my notes, sorry.
I I can find it later. It's in the it's in the handbook, I know, right?
It's in, it's in my notes from one of the sections, but you know, I I'll pull it all out and I have it all explained exactly what we're doing with it. And I can get it to you, Harvey, later.
Okay, no problem.
How can your training program help officers effectively and safely respond to individuals experiencing mental health crisis or struggling with substance abuse? You know, I thought maybe, you know, going forward, something we may need to incorporate is additional mental health and and crisis intervention training. I think the use of force simulator I I I mentioned earlier is very helpful. And and we do receive training in substance awareness and interactions. And our patrol vehicles have knocks on in them, and actually we've had at least two saves so far.
But I'm just to reiterate what we had discussed in a previous meeting, the goal would be to have something like a two one one number for mental health and wellness checks, et cetera, right? Which doesn't, which doesn't eliminate providing the crisis, the mental health crisis intervention training. But I think the ideal we discussed was having a a a separate unit, which might be a mutual aid from the county, but a completely separate unit respond to wellness checks and mental health crises, et cetera.
Yes, I do, that that's what we discussed. I'm curious to see what the county comes up with.
Yeah, right, this, yeah, supposedly the county already has this program, it's just not operating in the smaller municipalities.
I know they they it was, it was common practice years ago, but I I don't remember it for the last ten years or so, so I didn't.
There was a, there was a program I sat in on earlier this year about it. I can go back through my notes about it, but you know, they were, they were talking about the fact that you know, there has to be enough volume to be able to, you know, logistically support a a core group that's going to be responding to these events. And because we don't have them on the same at at the same levels that cities do, you know, they they don't assign someone to us. And so they were talking about, you know, grouping smaller municipalities together, you know, Mount Kisco, Newcastle, North Castle, Bedford, and trying to cluster them and assign somebody to them, and that was, that was the idea that was floated, and that sounded great. It's just, I don't know what it takes to get us there.
So I was on a call earlier with where something I I don't remember if it was Minnesota. But one of the other states had a successful program like that, and they they actually called it pods, Jill. Where but in their community, those positions sat in the ambulance department. Now, we have a volunteer ambulance, right?
Right.
They have a paid ambulance and they have these trained social workers who specialize in crisis intervention and and that they had this paid unit on staff in their ambulance department, which was a paid department. So I'm not sure how we can, what we can take from that, what we can adopt from the way they're doing it, but they literally called it pods. And instead of just one precinct, one town, they were serving on average like five five small towns, five or six.
So that's so interesting, because although we have a volunteer ambulance service for basic life support, which is our our Chapua volunteer ambulance, we for advanced life support, there is a consortium of municipalities that join together and are serviced by WEMS, which is a paid service. And I'm I'm wondering if maybe, you know, ideally, you know, the the county creating a pod like this would be the best way to do it, but I'm wondering if it's something that maybe we could do in conjunction with WEMS. Because mental health becomes, it it's front and center, and it's it's not getting the attention that it needs and it it's we're not handling situations as as well as we should, and we're forcing the police into you know, situations that they should not be anywhere near. That's interesting. I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you about that. Thanks, Ryan.
All right, support officer wellness and well-being. What employee, what steps can you take to promote wellness and well-being within your department? So an early, excuse me, employee assistance program with crisis intervention and counseling, we also have the officers have the opportunity to use the Westchester Blue Foundation. It's blood and for law enforcement, uniting in efforts, it's a nonprofit volunteer peer support group dedicated to providing confidential supportive environment for police officers and their families to cope effectively with stress, stresses and experiences during a career in law enforcement. Foundation will reduce existing gaps in in the access and availability of necessary support levels. Supported and promoted by the department leadership. Again, it gives psychological services, I got a second.
Can I ask you, is this? I'm sorry.
Good.
Is this specifically, though? This isn't anything that's that's mandated, it's only when an officer believes he or she really should look into accessing this help. So at at this point, there's nothing that, you know, on a regular basis, just kind of evaluates or determines, or is there a way to mandate accessing this? Is that something that we want to consider?
So I think this is probably where that conversation that that Harvey wanted to have should take place. Yeah, so that's a volunteer foundation, but you know, we trust our supervisors and our officers to you know, help identify somebody in crisis. And we go off of the early assistance program, you know, and internal counseling if possible, but no, again, this is, this is a voluntary.
So chief, the the psychological eval, the psych eval, that is something that's union based, right? In that you can't just send someone for a psych eval, is that in violation of the union contract?
If well, I I think that if I had a legitimate reason to feel that somebody was a danger to themselves or others, I absolutely have the right to do that as a law enforcement officer. I think what we've discussed in the past, Harvey, was that yes, officers are required to take a psychological exam to get hired, and that's based upon civil service law. The suggestion out there, which I which I don't disagree with is people's mental status changes, you know, throughout the years, right, or can change. And should there be an additional evaluation, you know, five years, every five years or or whatever it is? If civil service mandated it or it came down from, you know, the governor or or legislation, you know, that that would be something that the unions wouldn't have anything to say about. But I I do believe, and I'm sure that the unions would have an objection to it, trying to institute it every five or ten years because it's changed in terms and conditions of employment, which would, you know, it would certainly be an improper practice. would, you know, it would certainly be an improper practice. And then, you know, then it comes down to a line of questions like, you know, what happens if they fail? What are the steps that go forward? So I hope that answered your question.
It does, but is that something you would support? Because I would think, I think, well, what I would recommend is if we could propose having it mandated like every five years and then, or every year or whatever frequency the group determines, every year might be excessive, but also I would like it to be, you know, codified that it's also at your discretion. If you see someone going off the rails, you, you know, be able to recommend it with zero pushback or, or not recommend, but insist upon it without pushback. But I do think that having a psych eval every five years would be something I'd like to recommend to this committee.
I think this would be something we would, as part of our recommendations to the state.
Yes. Yeah.
I think that there's, this opens up not just, well, you can think of a psychological evaluation in many ways, but one of the things that I think is of concern is that police officers and policing oftentimes puts police officers in the middle of situations. And I'm not talking necessarily about discharge of weapons or anything, but they see things that are traumatizing.
That's right.
And because, and who, and depending on the culture of, of the, of the department, and I don't know how your culture is, but they may not be okay to talk about, you know, having seen a car accident and somebody dismembered, you know, just is, you can't unsee that when you see it. And you gotta help yourself when you, when you see things like that. Because then if you're traumatized and you're in your work, it's going to spill out one way or another. And that also raises the question for the supervisors and yourself, chief, about being able to recognize what traumatized behavior looks like. Bigger thing, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I can say this, that we have, department has, after specifically traumatic events, offered the officers counseling. And I don't know that anybody took it up, took us up on it, but we certainly have.
Yeah, and then that, that raises this other question. And I'm thinking like, I like that term that I think was Ivy said, big sky, like the blue sky thinking, like to make them, I mean, the idea of mental health is so stigmatizing in itself, but this idea that, that we care about your, you, and that you're doing this work and you, and if you're psychologically affected by it, we care about that. And how do you create a culture that makes that healing experience happen without necessarily going to the bar? Because that leaves a trouble for trying to heal through alcohol. So I'm just raising that as a kind of like a really broader concept.
I haven't gotten there yet, but one of my key takeaways when I first did the internal, my internal review was that can I create a better officer wellness program? You know, and put it in writing and take steps to do it. And that's something that I want in our recommendation to the board, to wellness program for the department. So, I mean, I hope, I don't think anybody agrees with it, but I'm going to put that down for future discussions.
I, I think it's excellent. Like you may all laugh, but I actually come from a family of police and military. I know it sounds funny, given, you know, some of the comments that I've made, but it's an extremely difficult career. And, and the toll is just enormous. And I wholeheartedly agree with that proposal.
So that was something that I was gonna, I.
Can I just ask, is there a particular budget you have associated with a certain amount of money which can go towards this wellness program for the police? I mean, do y'all have anything put aside for this?
I have some discretionary funds, but you know, depending how, what it would cost, you know, I may have to institute it slowly, but you know, but yes, I have a very tight budget and the controls.
I think this is an area which, you know, it would be better served. So when you put your recommendation in, maybe there should be a certain amount which go towards this.
I feel like maybe one of the things that we could also explore is what are the ways in which the community can demonstrate our gratitude towards our force as well? So, you know, one of the things that, you know, when you talk about wellness and wellbeing, just knowing that you have the support of the community and that you feel that you're kind of recognized and acknowledged for the, the difficult work that you do. And I sort of think about what Martha said at the top with regard to, you know, having participated in some of your, you know, police week event ceremonies and so on, and learned about some of the, the work that you're engaged in. I wonder how we can bring that message more broadly to the community and then how, you know, maybe the town board and the community can think about how do we, you know, how do we step in and demonstrate our support for, for police officers as well?
That'd be great.
Chief, can, can I just go back for two seconds?
Yeah.
And that is, you, you said that when some of your officers had been presented with a traumatic situation that you recommended, you know, counseling, but you know, you're not sure who took up on it.
More than anything else.
Would, what, what would be the downside of requiring it? Under the theory that there still is a stigma attached to seeking out mental health services? And so if it was a requirement and it's not discretionary, then maybe there's no stigma. And then maybe you get someone, you know, engaged in support who may not realize that they even needed it.
I like the idea in Jack, when I think it's something, I mean, excuse me, Jill, I was just thinking, I think it's something to run by Jacqueline and Lance.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I, I could see like the brick wall that was coming right in front of me, but I, just the whole idea that if, if we take it out of the discretionary realm, then we eliminate the excuse or the, you know, the appearance that, well, why is, why is so and so going?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know. It also feels like it would take away from being like a support and a, you know, a benefit and, and feel more like a, you know, like a requirement, like you're required to go to the doctor, like you have to, yeah, I don't know.
You just tackle it.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you do critical incident stress debriefing?
Oh, do we? Yes, yes, I made your instance, but guess we do.
So does everybody know what that is?
No.
It's just, it's, it's, you know, after a serious incident and it's over and done with, you know, it's like an internal review, you know? What do we do right? What do we do wrong? What do we do to see? How's everybody doing? You know, it's, it's not a real formal process for us, but you know, we require to, we do them on occasion when needed.
It seems that, I know there are other departments that use that, and I know they use it in hospitals a lot with their staff after there's been a particularly difficult situation. And maybe that's one way to do this in terms of caring for the officers, that it becomes a requirement that, that there is someone who comes in from the outside, who does a critical incident stress debriefing with whoever has been affected directly or maybe even indirectly. I mean, maybe the, the officer who took the call at the desk gets traumatized, but nobody knows that. You know, so maybe that is one thing that, and I know that there, there are probably several therapists in town who've had critical incidents stressed. I took it years and years ago. I no longer consider myself an expert at it because I've let that kind of training go. So, but I do think that that could be helpful and that could be a requirement. I, it seems to me that, because a lot of police departments are, I believe, have those kind of as a requirement that you sit through a stress, a critical incident stress, stress debriefing, which then hopefully will help the officers not take it at home and either, or go to the bar.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something we could do. That's certainly something we could do, for sure. We can mandate that.
I actually want to pick up a little bit on, it's a slightly different angle on what Martha's saying, but, but kind of to the culture of, of your department, there may be existing officers, just in the way they are, who would be really good at being the sounding board and help people through things. And in that way, sort of, and maybe invest in a little training, like build on the strength you already have. You may already have what you need and, and officers gain from that. And then there is that collegiality without stigma. And oftentimes, somebody who is trusted in that way can point out something like, you know, really, you gotta go talk to this person really hurt you. So.
And I think that happens a lot already, Vince, that, you know, with this whole department and, and, you know, squads that are tight, I think, you know, they recognize in each other, you know? And then, you know, I think they talk and discuss it. And unfortunately, cops to get through or pass them, they have terrible morbid senses of humor, you know, but that, that unfortunately, that helps them too. But I think that it's recognized and I think it does happen, you know, a lot, you know? And even the administration example, you know, you know, hey, how you doing? You know, it was really tough, you know? Would you like to go talk to somebody? You know, it was like you're talking out. So, so you know, this does happen on an informal basis, really not a formal basis.
And you might want to build on it, that's all.
Exactly. And maybe make it formal.
I have it written down, Martha.
Thank you, sir.
That's continuing about the Westchester Blue. And also we do have a department, I spelled Chaplain wrong, sorry, Martha. And that's, and that's the Reverend Martha Jacobs. So are there ways to address officer wellness and wellbeing through smarter scheduling? And we do have some requirements. Officers are not allowed to work more than 16 hours in a 24 hour period. And officers are not allowed to work more than two 16-hour tours in a row. So that, that's some of the ways, ways we do it, you know, try to reduce some of the fatigue. How can you effectively and proactively address the mental health challenges experienced by the police agencies through their careers? You know, I mentioned the thing, the first two, the first two, two things already, but then I also thought, you know, I thought maybe an additional suicidal or early warning, you know, training might be something I want to, you know, incorporate in the future.
Chief, when there has been a suicide in another precinct, do you kind of have that conversation with your guys and ladies?
I am, I have, I haven't had full, no, I haven't had conversations with them, but I actually have periodically sent out emails, you know, talking about it, you know, telling what, what's available to them. And if they need to talk to me or someone else, you know, we can work through that, so. Wow. We are through. So.
That's amazing.
You mean we could finish early?
Or, or touch some of the things, if anyone wants to touch on something, not to keep everyone here, that was important to me before.
Harvey, I did find that procedural justice section, it's in section two. I think you should have the notes for that.
Thank you.
So my thought for our next meeting is Tiffany and I will make sure that we're on the same page with a list of issues to be discussed further. And we should meet and talk about those things and then, you know, possibly break off into subgroups to, you know, have them just, of course, you know, Jeremy's the chair's approval and subgroups and then, and then hone those things that we're talking about. Come up with maybe some drafts as to, as to how we could go forward.
What do we think our timeframe is for the survey? Cause I noticed that, that Austin was doing it now. So it's almost like they're doing it as part of.
Hermine, are you still, are you still there, Hermine? Where, we actually had started to put this together a while ago, and then it was folded into a greater CRE survey. And when Hermine and I went back to revisit it and, and search out what happened with the general survey, because we never got a copy of it, we discovered that it had not been distributed. So we went back this week and have put together one that is really focused strictly on, well, refocused it strictly on policing and the topics that we're concerned about. So right now, I think she's reviewing some of my changes. And then I think she wants to put it before all of you. And then we just need to have it formatted into a better survey format. The original format we had, we didn't, we weren't pleased with. And that's one of the reasons we were happy to hand it over to the communications group. Am I correct, Hermine? Because we need, we need people who are much more savvy at putting out surveys. And we actually liked the way the Bedford survey was formatted. And we're looking to change it according to their type of formatting. So we just need to get the substantive questions looked at by all of you to see if there's any commentary, any additions, or if you have a problem with perhaps what we've included. And, and then it's just a matter of handing it over to a person who will be able to put it in the proper format and then we can distribute it. So I don't have a definitive answer for you, but soon is what I'm saying. I would have liked to have had this by now, but we don't.
So it's, it is being edited by a professional editor right now. And then on that communications group, there is, who is a part of the CRE? And we also, on that communications group, there are a couple people, the name Carlos comes to mind, who has the ability to put it in, I think he said a Google form or something to create the, the survey. So.
Could, could, could you forward me the Bedford one? I'm just curious how it aligns with the Austin one? And I'm just, and was that done as part of the police reform as well?
Yes. Yeah. I'll forward it to you as soon as I get.
Maybe also, just in the interest of time, you know, to the extent that, that the formatting is tripping us up or anything like that, like maybe we could start reviewing like the content pieces, even if we don't have it, you know, in Google form, Survey Monkey or whatever. Because there's also, like, there's also the possibility, like if, if, you know, the CRE communications team is tapped out right now, because I know they're working on newsletter stuff, you know, like they've got, they've got some other stuff going on. So, you know, we might be able to find another resource.
Absolutely. As soon as I get it back, hopefully tomorrow I'll forward it out. And Jill, I'll get you the Bedford survey right now.
That's wonderful. And, and is it helpful to everybody? If I circulate, I can, I forward it to Ivy, I'll forward the, the Austin one to the group so you could take a look at it. And it's just, just, just interesting to see, because all of a sudden it dawned on me that these guys were doing it as, like now, as, as part of this process. And I just didn't want to miss the boat on it.
Okay. And thank you, Hermine and Kim, for your, for your hard work on that. That's awesome.
Oh, you're welcome.
Welcome.
Are you going to push back the public hearing?
Yeah, I am. I, so yeah, I'll do a new schedule today and I'll include Carrie in it. So, and I almost think we might need two meetings to discuss the issues and then, you know, let me think about it. I'll put it, yes, we'll push it back, but I'll get an agenda to everybody or schedule tomorrow.
Okay, good. Good. All right.
Well, we all said, anyone else want to add anything?
For the next meeting, we will circulate the, Tiffany will, will, will help us put together that whole list of things that we're going to come back on. So, right, we have time for that.
All right. I'll just express my gratitude to everybody for their time and effort on this, you know? I don't think if you told all of us on January 1st, that this collection of people would be on a Zoom call, talking about police reform issues in December, that any of us would have asked, guessed that that would be what's happening. But there really could be no, no call I'd rather be on and no group of people I'd rather be working with. I'm really tremendously proud of this group and of the work that everybody's doing. And it's hard, it's not easy. And there are moments that are really challenging. Of this group and of the work that everybody's doing. And it's hard. It's not easy. And there are moments that are really challenging. But I'm just so grateful to everybody for sticking with this and working together on it. It feels like we're doing something really important here.
Oh, thank you, Ivy. Thank you, Ivy, and thank you, everybody.
I just wanted to add in as we go into the holiday season, you know, I'm especially thankful for all of you all and. Have a wonderful holiday season and thank you for this little group.
Yes, happy holidays and happy new year.
Happy holidays to everyone. Please stay safe.
Yes, likewise.
Thanks for everything.